This is a workshop between the school board, city council, and the rate and fees committee. In the audience, we'd like for you to listen, learn, take notes. In this meeting, we will not be asking you to voice your concerns. We want to say that if this moves forward, we will have ample public meetings to voice concerns, but this is to learn and listen. So number five, discussion concerning potential sales tax from the city of Guthrie to Guthrie Public Schools.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, and school board members, rate and fee committee, I wanted to kind of give a little framework of why we're here tonight before we begin. And after the bond election failed on November 4th of 2014, the Board of Education asked me to explore the possibility of partnership between the city of Guthrie and Guthrie Public Schools where a sales tax possibly could provide for some of the needs that we have with the current schools that we have with regard to maintenance and possibly technology. And following that directive, I met with the finance committee of the city council, and it was decided at that meeting that we would schedule a special meeting of the city council, rate and fee committee, and the school board so that we could have a discussion between those entities and provide some forum between the bodies of how that might work and what we might explore moving forward. And so that's what has brought us here tonight, and I know that our city manager has a PowerPoint presentation that she has done much more work on than I have, but we've kind of worked in concert on this to provide you some information as we explore this further.
Fantastic. So I will start through a presentation. I've prepared about three hours of -- I'm just kidding. I've not prepared three hours' worth of information. We have about 14 slides to get through. What I really want to do is, we want to hear from you, not from me, and so I'm going to give you some basic information, and then I would like for y'all to feel free to ask questions in the middle of the presentation, at the end of the presentation, whatever you see fit. So we'll get started. So just an overview of where we are, and I will say the rate and fee committee has met twice to discuss this. It was similar to what Dr. Simpson spoke about, is after we had a failed election on sales tax exactly five months ago from today, what would be our next steps? Our problems haven't disappeared as far as capital goes, and so what could be some possible next steps? So I'm going to go through a little bit of history, and we'll get through this. Currently, the city is at a 3% sales tax. The county is at .75. The state takes 4.5, and we are at a total of 8.25 on goods sold within our corporate city boundaries is a total of 8.25. For a little bit of trivia, I'll tell you, the state of Oklahoma is the only state in the Union out of the 50 states that does not automatically receive property tax to the municipalities. So other states can enjoy that revenue stream. And I wanted to go through and explain, because I think it's something that a lot of individuals miss, is how do state, county, school districts, and municipalities receive taxable funds? The state receives their funds through income tax, sales tax, gross production, and motor vehicle tax. Counties have Advilorum, state appropriations, and potential sales tax. School districts have that Advilorum, state appropriations, federal funds, and a potential of sales tax through the vote of a city. Municipalities have sales tax. The other part of our revenue, of course, is not taxed, but through the sale of water and other fees. The police chief is here, so he could make revenue if you're parked illegally -- no, I'm sure y'all are parked perfectly fine. Kind of wanted to give you a snapshot. We're at 3%, and I hear sometimes individuals say that we're really high for a city. I wanted to share with you that there's 239 other cities that have a 3.5 sales tax rate or higher in Oklahoma, and you can kind of see from there, you know, we look at geographical areas, we look at comparison cities to look at what revenues are, but you can see surrounding communities are all higher than us. And this gets a little tricky, because I'm talking specifically about the corporate city limit sales tax, not the county. So for example, Oklahoma County doesn't have a sales tax, and we do in Logan County. So then you have to look at the total tax, and as I said, we're at 8.25 today. This is a history since fiscal year 10. That teepee right there is kind of anomaly. That was called Mumford &amp; Sons. I don't know if y'all remember that little band that came to town, and so that was just a strange spike, and I don't anticipate that again anytime soon, but I will say that that's been our trend. So the way sales tax is paid to the city is two months, basically, in the rears. In other words, a retail shop is going to report their sales tax, and let's say for the month of December, we won't know those December sales tax numbers until February. February, I use that as an example, because it's typically a strong indicator of your economic climate, because it's the big shopping month. So we look a lot at the February revenues, because it reflects what happened in December. So we'll know around February 10th what our December looked like. I will tell you, I don't call it a trend yet, but what's interesting is this green line is our current fiscal year. We have an October fiscal year, so we start in October. Once again, that would have been reflected of August sales. So that's kind of August sales, September, October sales. What made me a little nervous is this is the first decline that we've seen. You can see the other, the last two years trended up, the last three years trended up, and this doesn't make me get too nervous yet. What we'll do is we've studied these and looked for trends, and a trend in sales tax is typically around three months. So we keep a close eye on this. We determine how we spend our money in the city based on these kind of numbers on a monthly basis. Right now, we're tracking okay. I just am curious what's going to happen over the next three months. I'm often asked, who are our top sales tax producers? Based on the last quarter, on a recent average, Walmart, OHC, Homeland, Brahms, Love's on 35, Staples, Sonic on 35, McDonald's, John Vance, and Arby's. And you can see that five out of 10 of those are all situated on Interstate 35. There's a dramatic pause. I don't know why that's not -- there we go. How much is 1%? People always ask, you know, what would half a percent yield, what would 1% yield? Based on my FY '14 sales tax revenue, so actual numbers, the city revenue 4.76 million. If we were to then take a look at that actualized into 1%, that'd be 1% increase in sales tax based on last year's numbers would yield 1.586. Remembering that we had that one anomaly, so this, to be more conservative, I would take that number down a little bit, and a half percent increase would yield 790,000. Just a brief history, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Simpson on the next one to talk to us about the history of bonds. The history of sales tax proposals for the city have been very slim. The last sales tax increase for Guthrie was 1979, which is still reflected at the current rate of 3%. In August, our voters did fail the 1% sales tax increase with 474 in the negative, I mean, 474 in the positive, 628 against. And just FYI, sales tax proposals require a 50% passing rate of voters, unlike a school bond election at 60%. Here we go.
Okay, you see a slide there that Seminole paper has highlighted in their effort to pass a bond election on March 3rd of this year, they've highlighted our troubles and actually kind of called us out. But basically, when I look at that, there's nothing on that paper that is untrue. It's the, those items that are listed, they're factual. We have failed six straight bond elections. We've failed eight of the last 10 bond elections. And of the six straight that have failed, only two of those have been less than 50% in what we've been, the yes vote. Now, the key element here is all of the projects were reasonable and needed, and are still needed. And we are, we continue to fall behind. This dates, the last bond that was passed was in 2005. It was the bond that renovated Jelzma Stadium and then built classrooms for Central Elementary and Fogarty Elementary. And since that time, we have had tremendous growth in student population, and we have not kept up with the buildings that we have, which were old and in bad need of repair in 2005 when this odyssey started. In fact, the only two bond elections that have passed since 1996 were the renovation of the stadium, like I just described, and also the roof on the high school. And so with our growing student population and the fact that our facilities are failing us, we are in a, we're in a spot here. We're in a fix, and we've got to do something to change what's happening with our school district. My fear is that we have become an economic detriment to this community, and it's not because of the magic that goes on our classrooms. I think our teachers do a wonderful job, but our front porch is in bad need of repair. And finding the right combination has been quite a challenge for this district. It has succeeded the previous regime superintendent, if you will. The excuses were where he lived, the excuses were the size of the project, and, you know, we've tried to answer those items. School board has, I have, but again, it failed. So you have in front of you a spreadsheet, and this spreadsheet, every bond election that the election board has a history of is listed on that spreadsheet, along with the votes and what it was about. And just so that you know, the ones that are in red have failed, and the ones that are in black were passed by the voters. And so you have the history of that. And you see, that's detailed, obviously, in the slide, but also in what the Seminole paper has, and that was, they ran that last week in their paper.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Five more slides, I promise. So some of the things that we looked at whenever Dr. Simpson approached the city of Guthrie was, is a sales tax ballot proposition a possibility for the school and the city? The city has the ability to allocate sales tax revenues to the school district. That would be a vote of the city council to place ballot language and have that voted on by the people. That's the possibility. The language of the ballot to allocate percentages to another entity can be on the same proposition or it can be separate. It can be a proposition and a proposition two, or all on the same proposition. Just a reminder that MAPS utilized sales tax for schools, and Kim is going to talk to us a little bit about some other sized cities that might be a little bit more comparable. But after speaking with one of our residents, Gary Good played a major role in, I say major, I think it's major, a role in MAPS. He was able to educate me a little bit on how MAPS for kids played out and how that worked in their community, but I'm going to have Kim talk about some of those. And also, a sales tax, of course, can always have a sunset duration. One thing that the rate and fee committee talked about was, you know, we try to look at, why did the sales tax for the city fail? And we heard numerous different things. We heard that individuals didn't like that there was a set list, there wasn't a set list of capital projects. We heard that there wasn't a sunset date. We heard, what else did we hear rate and fee? Not a sunset.
They didn't like the compensation piece.
Didn't like the compensation piece for police and fire and non-uniformed employees. So we were, what we were looking at is how do we bring back to the voters something that they would approve, that we could get behind and do as a team effort? And another thing, and I'll get to that in a moment. So we were looking at that. So the other cities that have partnered with schools, Enid, Lawton, Durant, Weatherford, and of course, Oklahoma City. I'm going to have Kim just run down a list of those, just to give you some ideas of what other cities have done, and this isn't that foreign in Oklahoma or in Kansas, as we've learned either. Kim?
Okay, we visited with five, well, actually more cities, but this is what we have. And so Enid has an 8.35% total sales tax. In 2003, they passed a quarter cent sales tax with eighth going to, 8% going to schools and 8% going to the city for CIP for the first eight years, and then the schools will receive the entire quarter cent for the remaining seven years. It sunsets in 2018. Lawton's nine, Lawton's sales tax is 9%. They have passed four sales tax elections since 1999, all with five-year sunsets. The last sales tax passed in 2014 with a guaranteed 2.5 million per year going to the school for five years. Durant's sales tax is 9.375. In 2008, they passed a 5.8 cent sales tax for 25 years. Weatherford's is 9.5%, and the city has passed two sales tax since 2004. They share their 1% with Southwestern State University, Weatherford Public Schools, and the Regional Hospital. They each have a cap for each entity, and the 2010 sales tax will sunset in 2020. And then Oklahoma City, of course, is a little more complicated, but their sales tax ended December 31, 2008.
One thing that we heard from voters that I mentioned before was that we didn't have a list of projects, and typically, and I know Bob Davis can speak to this very eloquently, typically in a sales tax for a city, you don't identify projects. You do so in a bond election, for example, where you identify projects. What we put some thought into is that if the city, with or without the school district, to be real honest, was to look at doing a sales tax election, I believe that the city of Guthrie needs to listen to its people. And one way to do that is to form a, whatever type of committee you want to call it, a community project committee, that would tell the council and be able to workshop with the council and say, these are what we want. I put these up here mostly because I like to get really strange looks from people, because they start going, what's a, what's a zip line? But these are the things in the past two years that I've heard the community want. These are just phone calls that we get. The Girl Scouts right now are very eager for a disc golf place, and the fact of the matter is that the city doesn't have the money to do it. We don't have the capital funds to do what we would consider quality-of-life projects for our community. And so without me talking about the need for fire trucks, the need for wastewater, you know, I think, in my opinion, and not the opinion of my council yet, is that to do some things for our community, for our kids, these are projects that would cater somewhat to children, but you would have a committee that would tell the council, these are the priorities that we want, whatever that is. If we try to get 10,000 people in our community to agree on the top five projects, we won't ever move forward. It's hard enough to get seven individuals, I love y'all, city council, it's hard enough to get seven individuals on the same page for projects, but what we think we can do is listen to the people. So I say that from the city's side. If we were to propose something, what rate and fee committee and I talked about is that we would propose our sales tax to be dedicated to capital improvement projects, and those capital improvement projects to be something that our residents could be proud of. Give you an idea of timelines. 2015 possible election dates, May 12th, June 9th, July 14th, August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, and November 10th. To the right, you'll see when the city council would have to vote on a resolution to place any proposition on a ballot. Here's what we were proposing, a possible timeline, that that community project committee begins meeting now, begins meeting as soon as possible, to get that prioritization of list, that list of quality-of-life projects. And then city council would hear their presentation mid-March. City council could then authorize ballot language to whatever that might be, sharing it with the school district, not share it with the school district. Maybe these dates aren't even close to accurate, just kind of giving you an idea of what could happen. A sales tax election could take place as, probably as early as June 9th, 2015. I would then ask the council to have an oversight committee. MAPS was successful with this, Reno has been successful with this, but an oversight committee that makes sure that there's integrity in what we've done, that there's accountability in the projects that we've done, and that we show a fiscal responsibility to our voters. We also would look at a five-year sunset is what we would look at do, to proposing to the council. With that being said, I have no idea which direction y'all would want to talk about. I think one thing that we need to talk about is whether or not the school district and the city should partner, and that'll kind of give Mike and I some marching orders, and I'd be happy to be quiet.
Questions from the workshop, the groups that we have up here? Anybody want to fire the first shot?
I think our first reaction was that it's never a good idea for a municipality to give up its only taxing authority to another entity of government when the sales tax is the only vehicle you have to fund your capital improvements and your personnel services. Your first reaction is always, gosh, you just can't hardly give up any of that to someone else. And so it took a little bit of conversation and discussion on our part with the mayor and the city manager to sort of look at a combined city sales tax and school tax in sort of the same vein. And I don't know that we are at this point in a position to recommend this action to the city council, but one thing I believe that the citizens' rate and fee committee is in unanimity on would be that if our elected officials decide to do this joint project, that it will not be a separate proposition. It would be a single proposition where the city would receive whatever percentage of this tax proposal turns out to be, and the school would receive whatever percentage is worked out between the two of them, and they will both either be approved or they will fail as a single ballot question. And we can explain why we feel like that's in the best interest of the city, if you want us to, but that would be the one thing we've looked at so far.
Anybody have questions yet? I'll fire the first salvo, if I may. Back at the sports museum, a month or so ago, supporters of the school and the school bond issue, it was mentioned that if they do receive a sales tax, that there was concern that they would not be able to pass a bond to build a new school. Is that still a concern, or is this just to get the things fixed for a while? What's the answer? Is that a concern? Anybody from the school board?
Concern of mine. I think that this might be a proposition we're looking into, but I don't believe this should replace, from a school's point of view, that we have to work on passing a bond issue, and that's our first consideration.
I think I share that concern as well, but I think that whatever we do as a school district and the city, I think we all recognize that something, this is the benefit as far as economic, we're concerned in economic development. I think when you run these.
I think perhaps you look at running a school bond with a sales tax, and then whatever you guys have in package, it has some sort of economic growth, economic development opportunity. I don't think a sales tax is going to be anywhere near enough to provide for the needs of our district, but I think also that any improvement in the school district, I think, is a benefit to the city. But like I said, I think it needs to be a package, so does a package deal as an economic growth potential, but...
What I might add on to that, because we, you know, we've not talked a lot about the specific needs. You saw a list from Serena provided for quality of life. I looked again today at our facility needs, and these are 2014 numbers on the, from our architect. And just, and again, this list is very limited. It does not even include the inside of the junior high. It includes sealing up the outside of that building and new windows, so we're not even touching the inside of that building. But the basic needs, some of which would have been addressed in the November election, that totals 7.1 million. And you have to also remember that the technology that we're putting in our classrooms right now is, I've been kind of vocal about that, that that is the, when Edmund Public Schools deems their computers surplus and unusable, we purchase those, and those are our new computers that go in our classrooms, because we don't have a technology funding stream that most school districts use bond funds to fund the classroom technology. And so if you add the needs of technology, which I would place over a five-year period, you know, that can be a moving target, but around 3 million, then you're looking at over $10 million in basic needs, and that, and we haven't added a classroom yet. That's the other part of this, is we are still continuing to grow. It's no secret, we have land under contract in the, near the Charter Oak and Douglas intersection in southern Logan County, and we would like to build a school there, which would greatly reduce our transportation costs. But getting there would require a property tax bond, general obligation bond, and funding the needs that we have of our buildings at, the needs that we've addressed at 7.1 million right now. And that's also, we're not accounting for inflation over the time that it would take to gather the money to perform those projects. And so that's kind of where we are with our needs.
Any questions or concerns? Anybody else in the workshop?
I have a question. Okay. All right. I guess this is for Dr. Simpson. So I've heard the concern recently that the school has, should be able to finance it themselves without a bond or a sales tax. But I remember you coming to Lions Club and presenting to us, it didn't seem like there was enough money, because a lot of what you have set aside for maintenance is current maintenance at that year. Can you tell us a little more about how much you put for maintenance, how much of that is even usable for something in the future?
Generally, our building fund, which is what we use for basic maintenance, is about 600, last year was around $640,000 that comes in, and we have, we try to keep that at a level figure. We do some projects out of there, but just general operations was, is around 250,000 on general operations. That's buying the wax for the floors and the toilet paper for the restrooms, and paper towels, and things like that. And so there's not enough money that could be captured in the building fund to ever build anything significant. And that's, and I have a slide in the presentation that I did to promote the bond issue that talks about the fact that even if we were to not spend any of that money over five years, you still can't get enough to even come close to building a school. And by then, the school is, and current construction inflation is 8.5% annually. So you have this spiraling effect of not being able to perform with that and get what you need. And then the other issue is, our bonding capacity is at 12.5, 12.6 million dollars last year. Well, that's fully bonded capacity, and when you go to pay that back, you have a duration depending on how high you want to raise the property tax level in order to, the higher you raise it, the faster you pay it back. And if the longer duration, which is less of an impact to the taxpayers, that's, that means that you're bonded out for that longer amount of time. Does that help? Does that, does that help?
So I guess the follow-up would be, so we're looking at a five-year sunset on, on this proposal and there are concerns that a bond issue wouldn't be able to be politically feasible in that time period. Is it possible to have, because I, I see that five years would get us to fix leaky roofs, a lot of the maintenance that we can't deal with right now, some, you know, small upgrades. It's not building buildings, but is it possible to wait five years to, and then go for the bond issue? Or do you think you have to do a bond issue during that five-year period?
Well, one key element that I want to go back to is we, even the maintenance issues, that hasn't added a classroom yet. And if we lose, if the, the deregulation and the moratorium on classroom size restrictions goes away by the state, which I'm hearing that it will, then we're looking at almost a million dollars per year in penalties because our classes are too full. And it's not a matter of us going out and hiring more teachers, we don't have classrooms to put them in. And so that's where we are with, with our facilities as well. And, and so we have to, the goal here is to develop a funding stream possibly to deal with our, our maintenance issues and our, our buildings to maintain what we have and at least get a start on that. And it doesn't slow us down on trying to be able to serve our students. And hopefully if the purchase of the land goes through without a hitch and then, then we have the land purchased where we can address those, those needs in a, in a general obligation bond.
I think maybe. One thing that the community or the city council may not be aware of, it looks like there hasn't been a bond passed since 2005. Currently, there's 400, approximately 471 children kindergarten through the fifth grade south of Seward Road. There's a dynamic explosion occurring in southern Logan County. If you drive down there, you'll see houses being built just as fast as they can get the house up, there's a sold sign in front of them. Guthrie Independent School District's like 232 square miles. Our, our new high school that we refer to a lot is 1968. Now, I understand the mistrust in the community because they ran a bond at $89 million to build a new high school. I can fully understand that, that, that's a, a number that would be hard for a lot of people to understand. But we have roofs today that are leaking. We have buildings that are falling apart and heaters that not only went out right after the bond went out, there was another one out recently, a coddle just up the street. The board has taken some dramatic changes by implementing conservative measures such as bids for all expenditures. And we're dramatically reducing the amount of a bond issues down to 2.4 million dollars and we're still having a very difficult time getting them passed because of a staunch opposition by some who think that public schools are, are that of the wayside. And, and you know, maybe that's true. But right now, there's 471 kids in southern Logan County still going to the public school in Guthrie that we, as an entire community, have a responsibility to. I don't know if this is the answer, but I can tell you that if we don't change the, I, in my entire life, I've always understood in, in federal law enforcement, there's three things that bring people to communities, fire, police and schools. Fire, police and schools. We need to start focusing on fire, police and schools. And I'm just talking about for the kids that are going to be here in 15 years.
I might mention that the kindergarten through fifth grade is the, is the figure that he cited south of Seward Road. We have over a thousand students of our 3,500 K through 12 that live south of Seward Road. And so that's an important part of our growth that we're struggling to, to keep up with.
I have a clarification question if I could. Our chairman indicated in his remarks.
Hold that mic a little closer, would you? Thank you. Sorry.
It's all right. I don't want him to have to run over here with the microphone, so I'll just lean in. In, in Mr. Davis's opening remarks, he indicated that we are unanimous on our sense of the proposal being a single proposal, that if, if, if we were to share some sort of sales tax increase, that it would need to be we win together or we lose together. I would like to know from the school board, are you unanimous in what I feel like I'm hearing that you want a sales tax and a bond proposal in the same election?
I don't think you have a consensus that all of us are going to agree that we think the sales tax is great at this point. I think we're, we're, this is the first step in the, the ladder because I don't think you could get all of us to agree that we should, a, a, a sales tax at least, I wouldn't think so. Maybe I'm in here.
Well, and my clarification question was most, mostly because I feel like we all agree of the importance of our students, the importance of our school, absolutely agree with you on fire, police and, and schools as being what brings people to our community. So what, what is our goal? What are we accomplishing this evening, I guess, is, is where I was trying to clarify. If we're, if we're all already in agreement on it being important, then what's the next step to this evening?
I'm not sure what, how the board feels about the single, single question rather than two questions. I know my preference would be two questions, but I understand your preference for one. And now the sales tax, in my opinion, doesn't replace a school bond. My vision would be we have one election with three questions, city sales tax, school sales tax, a school bond. And we promote that as an economic development growth opportunity. And that's just, that's my personal preference. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels. I think, I think the citizens of this community would receive that better. And then I, I know one of the concerns I have too is, is what, what would that rate be? You know, and.
Can you talk about that for a minute? Why you think the citizens would receive that better?
You're going to be answering a lot of questions, a log rolling. I think that's, I don't think that's any secret, but we, you know, that's, that's just a preference, I, just to have the three questions separate. I think you're going to have some optics there to overcome, but it's, that's, I don't know, tonight's the night to solve that question, but.
Well, if I can go back to a little bit on what Dr. Simpson said, by the constitution, you have about a 12, 12 and a half million dollar bonding capacity. And, and the other towns and cities have gotten a little bit more ingenious, doing other ways to get a higher capacity. And, and I think all of you will admit, a 12 million dollar school isn't very much, but a 25 million dollar school might be a little bit more. And I know the, it's, it's another one of those things, but sometimes we need to, again, think outside the pocket. We're doing that now because we're talking about sales tax, funding a school for maintenance. What are the, what are the possibilities on getting more than a 12 and a half million dollar bond to get a better school, a bigger school or whatever on top of if we do get this little sales tax to help with the maintenance of your current facilities?
I think that we need to start with the city and the school district establishing a trust with the community first. And I don't think the way you establish trust is come right out for the, like they did for $89 million. That's, that's one opinion on the board. I think we should do what we say we'll do and show them that we'll do what we say we'll do and establish a trust with the community and use that as a building block to advance. Our education needs to advance. I, I mean, and I, I can see, I assure you, I see the need. I've talked to many of you here tonight and I understand the need for the city, but I think we have to start at somewhere and I don't think the way to start is at the top of the mountain. I think you start at the bottom.
Okay. This is the first I've heard of doing the bond issue on top of the other two questions. So my question is, how much are you asking for potentially for a bond issue? What might you, is it, and is it for specifically the school down south in Logan County? So, I mean, for us to think about, we, if we want to roll, put all three of these together, we need to have a better sense of what you guys are even thinking about in that area.
Well, I certainly don't want to be speaking for everybody on the board or Mike. I mean, a lot of this is still very fluid. My thoughts are there's going to be a lot of sweat put into passing any kind of tax. And if we just run the sales tax first and we try to come back later with a school bond, everybody's going to ask, well, I thought you already fixed that. And if we address everything, you know, at the same time, where everything, you know, the issue's at front and center. And it, it also allows us to explain our long-term plan of, you know, the maintenance side of it and the new, new classroom specs.
That's not my question. My question is, if we do a bond issue on top of this, what is, what does that look like? Because we understand it's a .5, .5 for sales tax, but I'm not clear, we talked about 12.5 million dollar bonding capacity. Are we going to go, are you guys wanting a 12.5 million dollar bond? And is it all for a school down south or is it a lot less than that? I, I want clarification on that question.
That hasn't been really discussed by the board yet.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask just a question, it may be for the city manager. Approximately, how much of southern Logan County outside the city limits do you all actually think come into Guthrie and do their shopping and help participate in our sales tax at all?
Can I answer that?
Yes, like that. Because that's, that's where I have a concern.
Zero to 2%? I would guess. When you get down that way, a lot of people, Waterloo Road has a lot of businesses along it. A lot of them just go straight on into Edmund. Most of them work down south, so before they even come home, they stop. A lot of our sales tax revenue, and we've said this before and you saw it up there, is coming from tourists. Along the I-35, Staples and whatnot, Staples says they get like 80% of their sales are from people from out of town. So there is a lot of sales tax revenue, but it's all up here. It's not from down south. So when we consider this, we have to consider that the people of Guthrie mainly up here are going to be the ones contributing to this sales tax, the ones down south who send their, their kids to our schools. I don't think they will come up here to support that. They don't do it now. So that's always a concern, but we deal with what we've got and as long as we're expanding on the interstate with more tourists, that's going to help a little bit. But it's, it's, yeah, we don't get a lot of support from down south on the sales tax. Did I answer that right?
I concur.
I have a question. Mine was I heard the rumors that the people in the south who are, you know, filling our schools, didn't even come out and vote. The people here voted your bond issue in, but it didn't go the 60% that you have to have. And it was because the south is not coming in and voting even though they're sending their kids here. So how do we get those people to get out and vote if they're going to send their kids and they want good schools?
Well, let me help you out there from the city side. If I remember right, Dr. Simpson, you correct me, but the city nor South County passed that, that bond issue. It wasn't just South County. The, the city did not pass it either. If you just looked at those precincts up here.
And it, and it, the margin was worse, the further south precincts that you went, but, but there, there was not a super majority gathered even inside the city limits.
There was a large Naysay group, a very small Naysay group that was very vocal that passed out information that based on the timing and things and the reduction in tax rates in conjunction with the assessor. There, basically, it's my opinion, there's a large group of individuals in, in certain areas of our county who are anti-public schools. And they're absolutely anti-tax for any purpose or any reason. And I hope that they see that there's a massive need to educate our children and you can spend it now on those kids or you can spend it later, is my opinion. And I hope they start spending it now.
And I don't think everybody can homeschool.
Well, I think there's a lot of people in southern Logan County that would like you to homeschool and like to do away with public schools altogether.
Yes.
And I, I respect their right to believe that and I fought for that right. And I hope they continue to hold those rights. But the majority of the children in public education, you know, aren't afforded a mom and dad that can stay home and, and do that, especially in today's economies with the, parents have to work. And we have to educate them and look after, we have a responsibility to them. And I agree with you, but they did turn out and vote.
Okay.
But was there, it was over 50%. I think it was 53%. But they scared a lot of people saying that it was this much of a tax, any tax hike is going to be a, an increase. Because our, we haven't had a, a debt, the school hadn't had a debt for what, three years? It's been exhausted. So any, for the past three years, we haven't had a debt. So anything that the school does, so you can notice they've turned down all of our last ones and we asked just to roof our buildings. We asked, one time we asked to put an air conditioner in our high school. And that was.
And, and I think the city, when we didn't pass our sales tax issue and the school didn't pass the school bond issue, I think we both as a group, we learned lots of lessons. It's, it's not social media. It's time to knock on doors. It, it's time to really get out there and hit some of these other people in ways to do things. So this next time, it will be handled a lot differently than it was last time.
Well, it makes me sad that we don't, that my grandson says we have awful, I work at Deer Creek Public Schools. Those people pass those bonds. And we've got to do that because our kids need a good school. So we need to, I, I'm, I'm for, you know, get the schools going.
Serena, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
You discussed the other cities in Oklahoma that have passed a sales tax for schools. Can you discuss why they may have chose to do that? Were they single question, multiple questions and what their motivations are?
And Kim, you may want to back me, but for example, is it Lawton? Lawton, for example, has Vance Air Force Base and the BRAC Commission had made some threats of closure, et cetera. And if you look at their, their property tax base, I am in the wrong city. I am in the right state. Enid is in Oklahoma. Just want to let you all know that if you didn't know that. And that would be Fort Sill. I'm going to work on my geography this evening. Thank you for pointing that out. So I have no idea where it was.
It's Enid in Vance.
So there's a city in Oklahoma and it has an air force base. And therefore a lot of the, your property tax is exempt, et cetera. So they had an interesting time because they couldn't get property tax, very similar in, in Guthrie, not with a military institution, but that we don't have major industry paying in a property tax. When you look at your major employers, our, our Job Corps, school district, city of Guthrie, I mean, those, we don't have major industry and that y'all, y'all being exempt from that property tax, it carries a great burden and us not having major industry. When you really look at our top sales tax producers, that's usually pretty shocking that Arby's is in my top 10 over and over again. Brahms, if you go talk to the Brahms manager, which I do quite a bit, and I, because I won't tell you why I'm always there, but they, you know, I always ask the question, how many of these individuals are locals? And I mean, that number is, she says, I don't, I don't know any of them. I mean, you know, there's, I've seen some of y'all there, so don't act like you haven't been there. But the, the tourist or the, or the I-35 traffic is a great deal of that. I, I do want to, if I may, actually, Kim, why don't you talk a little bit about some of the other cities and what they, and I'm going to talk about maps real quick, briefly, what I do know. And I'm going to address the issue of one proposition on a ballot. When I've talked to the Oklahoma City folks, you know, one thing, and President Slay, I, I greatly respect your opinion on the transparency of separation of propositions, I do. What I do know in communities is that if we cafeteria plan out projects, they pick and choose. If you can imagine doing a school bond election where you said tennis courts, softball, football, music, et cetera, I would fear what would happen to our communities if we, we were to truly pick and choose on a ballot. What happened with maps that I think is very important to look at is they had placed this arena on the ballot. There was not a current tenant in the current arena. And I think if they would have piecemealed out that sales tax and said, we want you to build it so that they will come, you wouldn't have Oklahoma City thunder. And, and I believe that there's some importance to the partnership that we're trying to achieve. And that's another reason for putting those together. You didn't hear me mention that I have a 24-year-old, 24- You didn't hear me mention that I have a 24-year-old, 24-year-old ladder truck that is out of service today because it can't pass an inspection. If we have a fire today at Holiday Inn, I'm going to call Edmund and we're going to call Stillwater. And we're going to see who gets here first with the ladder truck. We do not have certain needs also with capital. The main reason that I talk about quality of life is exactly what Mr. Pennington said, was gaining back the trust of our citizens, was to say, you know what, we want to do something great for our community. And to be real honest, if I came to my council and said, you should just do wastewater projects, some roadwork and some other things, our people don't gain trust. Because when they flush the toilet and it goes away, they don't think about what happens at our sewer plant. But what we could do is some really great, great community projects. And you know what, I can hold off on some major capital work if we can get the trust of the people. And that's why doing those, those really neat projects. So I just wanted to explain why I couldn't recommend to the council doing separate ballots because I believe in the partnership and I believe that it's time that we listen to our people. Kim, will you talk about those other cities?
And Lawton, for instance, they recommend that it be a single proposition. And they've passed four since, four sales tax elections since 1999. Each of them have a, had a five-year sunset. And the reason is because their schools could not pass a bond. And so, and that's, that's part of our concern. But this last year, they did finally pass a bond, so they're hoping this will be the last sales tax that they share. Weatherford, their 2000, their 2004 sales tax, it was such a success. In 2010, they did separate the projects. And so the people voted for the project. And, and that's how, and I think, what'd they say, 88%? That was their lowest, their lowest approval was 88%. So I didn't, I don't know, I didn't talk to Enid about theirs. Did you? Was it, was it a single proposition? Yeah. So, so as you can see, the, the cities that we've highlighted, that's how they, they did it, except for, for Weatherford.
Do you think there's a danger in alienating the individuals that live in Guthrie proper or shop in Guthrie proper versus, you know, the large number of people like Dr. Simpson said, over 1,000 south, I mean, a third of the people that are going to be utilizing these benefits from the schools go live or, or shop? Do you think by putting, that for us to put it on the back of the people that live up here, it's a spare though? I mean, I mean, we're, we're still asking questions. We don't have any, I don't think any of us, we didn't walk in here and lockstep tonight and say, we're, you know, we're ready to do this. We're asking questions because I'm a little concerned about taxing Guthrie proper more than I am, I think it ought to be fair representation in taxation for everybody utilizing this school.
That's a policy question and that is above my pay grade. And so probably elected officials want to talk about that, the political side of it.
I don't think there's any way to, to make any other payable function from people that don't come up here. They don't come here, they don't come here. I don't think there's any way the city can put a fee on citizens in the city limits with the school cannot put a fee on citizens in the school district if I'm not mistaken. I don't think you have that capability. I may be wrong.
It could be a, if it were a county-wide. Oh, okay. Oh, let's try those. No, all right. If it were a county-wide, you can do a county-wide sales tax dedicated to schools. That gets real complicated real quick because we have, I believe, 11 school districts that have property inside Logan County. And so that gets really complicated. Obviously, we have the largest amount of properties in Logan County and we don't extend into another county. But there are quite a few other school districts and administering that becomes expensive. And it also requires the vote of everyone that, that lives inside the county. And we're talking about other school districts and, and it gets real cumbersome real quick. And tho, those are the two options for a sales tax, either a municipality such as the City of Guthrie or Logan County.
So it kind of boils down to, just like it is now, if we pass the sales tax, it goes to whoever comes to Guthrie to spend money.
Well, and I might mention too, that it is not, if, Mayor, if you go to Crescent to, to buy a, a cup of coffee, that sales tax doesn't necessarily go to Crescent Schools. It's based on the number of students and the size of the district too. So it, again, becomes really, really tricky and, and actually, it's, it can be expensive to administer as well.
Yeah. Okay, we've been here 55 minutes.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
When we were first approached, there was a five-year sunset proposed for this joint task. What happens at the end of that five year? If we help you meet these maintenance needs for five years, do you have a plan to pick those remaining maintenance needs up?
My thought on that, and I'm not speaking for the board, but we've got a lot of, a lot of ground to cover in those five years. And building a school is a part of that. Being able to maintain the buildings is a part of that. Gaining trust is a part of that as well, doing what we said we would do. And if we have done a good job and at the end of that decide that we want to reauthorize because we still have a need, because I don't think anyone can predict what the growth of our school district will be in the next five years. As I looked at the trailing five years, we're, we have grown by almost 300 students. And when you, when you consider that and meeting the needs of those students, it, it also has to do with what our bonding capacity would look like at that time as well. So it's hard to say what we would do in five years with that. I have the list of projects that we need to accomplish over those five years. But how we get, gather a funding stream for that. And I don't think there's anyone in this room that thinks that by and large, we're going to have anything. I don't think we're going to lose 100 students in the next five years. I don't think there's any chance of that in our school district because of the potential for growth as it moves north toward Guthrie. And, and that's the area that we're trying to address as well, possibly through a general obligation bond. Does that help, Tina? Okay.
Any other questions or concerns that we want to address tonight?
I have a comment. And it's kind of to piggyback. It's kind of to piggyback a couple of questions and comments because I can guarantee I am not a bond expert. Thankfully, I had somebody dumb it down for me. And right now, our bonding capacity was 12.7, 12.6 million. But the reason that that is is because we haven't had a bond in several years and it's kind of like having no credit. So we're having to build back our credit and over that five-year sunset period, number one, that would say, okay, citizens, we're not going to strap you with a forever sales tax to support this. But it would give us a chance to, if we can get a bond passed, to build our credit, which could increase our bonding capacity over a longer period of time and allow us to potentially carry those funds into prepares and schools, new schools.
I got a silly question maybe. Have you ever looked at, and this might be a loaded potato, it seems to me that the people on the very southern edge of Logan County are some of the biggest naysayers. But if somehow we could DNX those folks and let them pay Edmund-level property tax, they would get better quality schools, but wouldn't have as many students to deal with and maybe more people who would be pros Logan County schools. It's just a crazy thought, but it just seems like that's one of our problems right there with the school.
That's obviously not a reward, Dr. Wood.
I.
I can tell you what the process is for deannexation and it is not easy. And it is, and another district has to be willing to accept those students as well. And so it's not, it's not an easy endeavor. And when, hopefully, giving a commitment to the, the entire school district and especially where our growth is, with the purchase of land speaks volumes toward what we look to the future and try to, try to have as much vision as possible. We can't, for the, you know, it's hard for us to control the voters, but we can control how we manage our finances to put our district in a position where we can purchase land. And then maybe, our hope is that the voters will take a look at that and see our vision and, and see that we have, we want to serve those students. And we don't want students, you know, right now, we have students that ride on a bus for two hours or an hour and a half each way to and from school. And, and I, I know that you guys are aware of this. We create our own traffic jams in Guthrie during, in the morning and in the afternoon with yellow buses. Because a bus, when it gets to Guthrie in the morning, has to make six stops at six different schools before it can deliver all of its students. And the same thing happens in the afternoon. And those kinds of things, you, you know, we didn't get here overnight. We're not going to fix it overnight either. But they are our students. And the thing that I share with everyone is that they're all Blue Jays, whether they're South Logan County or Guthrie proper or the, the land in between. And so, so I, I guess I really wouldn't want to touch that and I don't think any of the school board members would either.
I just know that if it's your daughter or granddaughter like it's mine, our school starts at 8:15. So if they're riding that bus an hour and a half, okay? They're leaving at 5 o'clock. When are they getting up? When do they have to go to bed? It's a quality of life issue. And there's a few people in our community that have been controlling or deciding the quality of life of others way too long. And these are my personal opinions, but I have a lot of them.
I've got one more question. I know a couple of other board members have, have mentioned it to me as well, but the tax rate, I think I've heard a total, a combination of 1%. Possibly. And I know there's some business owners on the board. I have family that has businesses here in Friends. And one of the concerns I have personally, and I think this is shared by some of the board, is what does that sales tax go to? Is it nine and a quarter? I mean, I have some real reservations for anything above nine. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
If we do one, one cent, that have to you, have to the city, that takes us to 9.25 because we're at eight and a quarter now. Now, it's already in there. Yes. So it'll be 9.25. And again, that's still lower than a lot of places around. So it's just, yeah, people don't hear, we used to be nine and a half and we were paying different things, so it's been done before and not too distant. Okay.
Well, I didn't have a question. I, I just had a comment. Two things bother me quite a bit here. And one is that you've had 17 bond issues and 14 of them have passed by a majority of the people who voted. In other words, 14 of them have received 50% or more of the votes. So what Terry is saying is very, very true. There is a margin of voters in this district and it is between 150 people and 415 people that are causing every one of your bond issues to fail. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot of people to me. And, and we almost know where they're at. So, you know, one thing that I would like to try to work on, can we get 400 people to outvote those 400 that are killing us every time we do any kind of a school bond issue? Because you need bond issue money. You cannot get enough money from a sales tax to do what you need to do. Ultimately, you have got to pass a bond issue. And so I'm having a hard time wrapping myself around how are we going to solve your problem by giving you a little bit of sales tax money when you've got bond issue needs?
Why, Bob, if I could, I don't think we're asking you really to solve our problem. We're, we're trying to think outside of the box to look for creative ideas to help these kids in these schools. And I can assure you, we understand those numbers very well. It's, it's nothing different combat. Everybody wants to go to war when somebody makes them mad. But all of them won't line up up there with you when you start getting on the plane.
And I didn't mean to sound negative in any way. I'm not upset at you guys. I'm upset at this little minority group that's controlling the outcome of our economic development.
I understand that, Kevin. We are too.
Bob, I, I might add, you know, the, the idea of taking pieces, pieces of this and, and trying to leverage funding so that we could get where we need to go sooner, which in the end saves money. Because if we have, let's say our bonding capacity is 12.6 million and a school is, is about that or a little more, that takes up the entire bonding capacity for five years. And we, we have no funding stream for our most pressing needs to fix the leaking roofs in Guthrie, in, in our school buildings here. And the, the negative things that we've heard, which seem to change with every election of what people don't like about it, certain people anyway, is that the, the, the longer the duration, the less of an impact the property tax going up would be. And if we have a funding stream of sales tax that allows us to do some of those things, then it gives us a, an opportunity to not be such a burden on the property owners of, of, of the Guthrie School District. And so that's part of the, the rationale of what we're, what we're seeking here. It's, this is not, I won't tell you this is a perfect situation because if it were a perfect situation, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Almost every district, for example, gets a bond issue to buy their buses. We bought the buses last year. We bought eight buses last year out of money that we already had. You know, all of our maintenance comes out of money that we have, even though this year because of the actions of an elected official and the county assessment ratio went from, from 12 to 11, we lost $400,000, $400,000 roughly. Some of the other districts in our county had to lay people off. But we not only absorbed that $400,000, we also bought buses. And we've continued on, but I just sent my daughter from Guthrie High School to Oklahoma State University four years ago. Now she's graduated. But the technology that we have for the children in our, our school district, I would love for you all to come and see it any day. I'll shut my store down and take you. We, we need to make improvements. And if we could do it in conjunction with the city, I think that would be fantastic.
Well, this is entirely an elected official's decision. All we can do is make a recommendation. But I think if I were on the city council, what I, the minimum that I would want from you, given the fact that we might be able to generate 700 and, and 93, $800,000 a year with a half a penny. $800,000 a year is not going to fund the exterior improvements of the junior high. $800,000 a year is not going to fund your technology needs over a five-year period. So what we need is if you have $800,000 a year for five years, what would you do with that money?
If we decide to go forward, I can assure you, you will have a list.
Yeah.
And that's prioritized by our staff. The list that I have is not prioritized because it was, it was generated for the $2.4 million bond issue. But I can tell you that the, and I want to refresh the prices because the inflation may have kicked in on some of these items since we, since we last priced it.
You know, there's upsides to everything. If you look at those last like six or seven elections that you look at, we brought over 50% of the electorate to the table for us. I don't know how many you brought on the last one that you had. So there, there's two sides of nickels on each one of them. So I mean, you could talk about what we can do for you and what you can do for us. We brought over 50% of the electorate, about seven or eight times. You know, and I'm not even convinced that, that we should, you know, tax the populace two ways. So I'm just throwing that out for you to look at.
And I do want to say, I think our, part of our interest, at least my interest in doing something, whether it's a single question or a separate question, regardless.
doing something, whether it's a single question or a separate question regardless, is that if you look at our comprehensive plan in Guthrie, it has two things that say that are the best things that get people to move to a town. And one is schools, the other one are parks. They're quality of life issues. And I think that's what we struggle here, and we tend to go for, like, big projects and things a lot. But I think if we hit these small things, when it comes to maintenance, I think it was a huge embarrassment for Guthrie to have our heater go out making state news. And I think it's unfortunate, it makes me sad that we have that kind of mentality in this town, we don't seem to care about schools. And when I showed up to Guthrie, when I moved here in 2006, I'm in, I remember our Realtor from Edmund, and I was surprised, she had a lot of little kind of mumblings about how Guthrie's not a good community because they don't care about their schools. And that was in 2005. And so I think it's definitely economic issue, economic development issue, it's a quality of life issue. And I think this, a sales tax, one way or another, can go a long way in moving our community forward. We only need a fifty percent to pass. I think that if we can both, as a city and a school, work together, we can use both our coalitions. The other thing I think is really important is we've had a lot of no campaigns, they've been very successful. What we've struggled in are yes campaigns. If you want to win an election, whether it's a city or school, you have to have a yes campaign as if you're running for office. You have to go door-to-door, you have to put signs out, you have to make calls, you have to leave things at people's doors and take it seriously. So for me to even think that we should move forward, I think there's got to be a commitment that says, we're going to do a yes campaign, we're going to take it real seriously, because otherwise, there's no point in doing this. Because the no campaign, they don't have to say a whole lot, and if there's no yes campaign, we're screwed. And so we've got to move forward and have a real campaign, really, if we're going to say, we're going to do this, the only way I'm going to support is if we actually have people say, look, let's do this, let's be strategic about it. Now, the city and the school, I'm not sure how the politics in schools, as a city, we can't do the campaign, it's got to be a system, organic thing in the community. And so I think if we go about it the right way, we can do a whole lot in this community, and we can really show that we care about this community, evidenced by quality of life things, you know. One of the biggest, this is kind of funny, I really promote the pool a lot, and the reason I promote the pool, because a couple, what, two, three years ago, we closed down that pool. I got more phone calls generated from that pool than almost any issue, even beyond the whole chamber blow-up that I had. But I had so many calls about, you do not close down that pool, this is a quality of life issue, this sales tax can help us, that pool's on its last legs, I'm telling you right now. We need to, either need to spend like a million bucks by itself on a new pool, or we need to find other options to keep it in maintenance, maybe a splash pad or something. But we have to do that, because if we want to have growth in the city, we have to do quality of life issues. And so I'm adamant that we do something about this, we've got to do it in the right way. So, that's all.
I'll be brief, and Terry, I want to thank you for bringing up our failed sales tax election, and if you were really curious about what the number was, it was forty-three percent failure on the sales tax, so thanks for the reminder. But, so it wasn't close to passing. I do want to end with, I think, because what I'm seeing is a little bit of shifting and everybody's hungry, I think what I need to do is probably talk to Dr. Simpson, that your board, give some feedback to the superintendent. I believe that I will still move forward with the rate and fee committee, we have a meeting in February. I believe that with or without the school district, I believe that the city will move forward on a potential sales tax election. If the school district is interested in sharing for us to put something on the ballot, we would need to know soon, very soon. And so I'm going to wait for that direction, we can't make a motion at this meeting, but I eagerly await for that, otherwise, we have a lot of work to do for the city.
And with that, we have been here now fifteen minutes, we learned a lot, talked a lot, I think we need to have another meeting possibly, a workshop like this, I think this is pretty good. But at that point, either Terry or Travis, if I could get you to adjourn the school board, please.
Salute. Second.
Second, no call.
Yes, Watson. Yes, Jonathan. Yes, David. Yes, any question?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Six eyes, you're right.
Your special city council meetings adjourned.